It's time to call this office of Cleveland County Board of Education. The order. Ms. Miller, I have approached you. I'm sorry, would you please leave us in the plane?
If everyone would stand to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as a law.
As we did in our last meeting, at this time, I would like to invite everyone to join me in a moment of silence to honor our nation, state, community, and school system. Thank you. The audience tonight is my sparks again. I expect to pick up on the 25th. I think that's our next meeting. Do we have any guests here from Teacher Assistance Association, NCAA? I do appreciate it. How about any principals? Gosh, Dr. Fisher, your message of get to it at the administrative retreat must be taken effect.
Everybody is prepared. Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't believe we have any other elected officials here either. First item of business is the adoption of the agenda. What's the point? You all had that in front of you for at least five days, all in favor of you, or all, what is the pleasure, the board?
I'd like to approve the agenda.
To move it seconded that we adopt the agenda. Any questions? You have in front of you any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. On to public participation at this time. We invite the public to comment on agenda items. I believe we have one for us tonight, and that's Michael Lowrance, who's going to talk to us about hiring, right? Mr. Lowrance, you have the floor for three minutes.
Everyone here. As a citizen of Cleveland County, I am concerned about the hiring mistake that was going on in the school system, mainly latterly. I'd like to ask each board member, ask yourself this question. If you had a child who sent them to college for four years and got a four-year degree in a certain subject or a certain field, and your child done the internship, got all they need to get a job in the school system, kept getting turned down for the job, getting beat out by someone who does not have this certain degree that they are applying for, but are still getting the job. This has been going on for a long time in Cleveland County's school system. Board members, how would you feel? You feel like you're wasting your money, wouldn't you? Jobs in the school system are given to individuals who know the right people, whose family members are a principal, a teacher, a cousin, or a brother of someone in the school system, or they go into a certain church. Board members do the right thing, overturn this situation I'm talking about. The good old boy system needs to stop it. Board members, it's up to you to stop it. It's been going on too long. I have a daughter, a niece, a nephew in the Cleveland County school system. I hope they get a good education. Give the jobs to qualified ones who have the full degree, not a partial degree, where three years later they can get that degree. Get it to the ones qualified then there. This will benefit the teachers, the school system, and most of all, our students in the Cleveland County school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowrance. We appreciate you sharing this information with us. Board of Education, I use input and participation from our community. As Board of Education, we will review the information presented and work with the superintendent and school system staff as appropriate. Thank you again. Next item off the agenda is approval of our consideration of the minutes of the July 21st, 2014 closed attorney consultation. What's the pleasure, the board?
Make a motion for you approve the July 21st closed attorney session.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of July 21st, 2014 closed attorney consultation. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now for consideration of the minutes of the July 21st, 2014 business session. What's the pleasure, the board?
Make a motion for we approve the July 21st, 2014 business session.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of July 21st, 2014 business session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. On to globally competitive excuse. First item regarding testing waiver, Dr. Fisher.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, Mayor, and Board. If you remember last fall, we talked about the state law that required all testing to be done in the last five days for a semester course, ten days for a year-long course. This was the law that was passed. And to be honest, we could create some issues for our schools, especially senior exams, online testing, create a real headache, we will, for our schools and our town building department. We received a memo from the empty state superintendent, Dr. Darlin, DBI, that we could request a waiver for this year only, I stress the waivers this year only, to extend that to a five- to ten-day window. The window would be a ten-day and a fifteen-day window. The ten-day window would be for block classes or semester classes. The fifteen-day window would be for year-long classes. We as an LEA could give that out, allow that to do if we believed it. We must approve that, complete an application, have it determined to get out by September 1st. It'll be taken to the state board meetings in September. It is our intention, and we do ask for approval of that waiver, the local office of that waiver, and then we will apply for that to state level. I admit with our testing accountability office, our plan would be to continue with a five- and ten-day plan, but this waiver would give us the flexibility in areas that becomes a problem, senior testing and online testing. Just a little bit of information, many of our tests now are online. For example, fifth grade science is an online test. We encourage our schools to do that online, and of course, we wait, but schools may not have 350 or 400 years to be able to do that. Shouldn't just spread that out over a couple of days. When you spread that out over a couple of days, that takes time. You can buy that with reach achieve, reading, math, you achieve, it takes time. So we would like board's approval to apply for a ten- and fifteen-day waiver. And if we got that, we would, our plan would be to use the five and ten days as the state law states, but we would have the flexibility to, we would be able to be a ten- and fifteen-day waiver. So we'd ask for approval for us to move forward with that waiver. I'd be glad to answer your questions.
Ask the law. Fisher, any questions? Yes. Dr. Fisher, I, for the board members, I do believe that this is a good thing for us as I have a high student, and there wasn't many problems with the testing question. I think this is, I'd like to work in, we have given some flexibility.
We have, we got that flexibility to continue. This is just a one-year waiver, so we type, I type things.
Any other questions about Fisher? What's the pleasure, the board?
I make a motion for approve the testing waiver.
Moving seconded that we approve the testing waiver for one year. Fisher, any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we turn to innovative leadership. We're going to ask Dr. Harper to give us your 2014 section. While she's coming, both of you are talking, speakers platform. I ask the board, I think we would all like to honor and acknowledge and recognize you for your recommendation about Cleveland County, mission for Cleveland, whatever it is, want to free women in the area. I think that's wonderful. I think we all care for being a woman.
Dr. Appleton, before Appleton, I'm going to give you a great opportunity to share the final report from our staff case. It is, you have a copy of the full report, it's about 42 pages, but I would like to briefly share a few highlights from the summary document. Cleveland County schools is a high-end for the district in many areas. When others come to visit our district, they are in awe of what we do and how we do it. I'm pleased to report that the next 118 noted five powerful practices within the district. Powerful practices fall into the category of exception. The team found a significant amount of support in the Board of Education, and their passionate leadership that embraces the children they serve. An extensive amount of community partnerships is uncommon and impressive. The Board of Education has a strong commitment to a vision and mission and allows the staff to develop, improve, and provide executive services. The team also recognized the Board of Education for actively supporting community partnerships that have produced millions of dollars in facilities, scholarships, and services. The school districts embrace the community, work together in the community, and facilitate change within the community, and has an impact with respect to students. The instructional staff and the leadership were noted in the report for the extensive use of data. Also, our teachers were recognized for their high level of collaboration that supports instruction and student learning at all levels, and promotes the notion that the district is in fact a learning community. The team only noted two opportunities for improvement. The team recommended that we develop and implement a consistent grading system, and that we formalize and implement a process to evaluate the effectiveness of our support systems for our students. The team also finally required, determined two required actions that we must address in order to continue meeting the advanced standard accreditation standards. The first, we are required to develop and implement a formalized review metric for all major district initiatives that include measurable objectives, periodic assessments, and timetables for evaluation and revision. And the second required action, we are required to develop and operationalize our whole district plan for stakeholder involvement that assures a balance in random selection of all parents, community, students, staff, and administrations designed to foster communication, feedback, and program communication. So as we move forward, our next steps in the process include review of discussed findings from this report with all of our stakeholders, develop action plans to address the two required actions. We'll use this report to guide and strengthen our efforts to improve student performance and system effectiveness, and we will continue to meet the advanced accreditation standards, submit all required reports, engage in continuous improvement, and document all of these. I would like to thank the Board of Education for your role with my district and your support of the organization.
Any questions, comments, all?
I have a question. Dr. Harper, in regards to the grade system, there has been a great support for, Dr. Sheen Page, who is as well, with DBI, that they're working on a systematic grading scale. Will that get on this as well?
That was mostly our end sports classes. I saw that this today. There is some conversation that follows from state level, and being yes, it will get to some of this information that we receive as we draft recommendations from, there is a change in the GPA starting with next year's expression, going to be a impact, how much is for honors class, how much is for AP class, how much is for a career college promise class, it's negative expression. There's lots of questions still unanswered about that, and we received some information today with basically requests for questions, you know, send us a question, send us a concern. So we'll be working with Dr. Dixon, Dr. Ware, our power school folks, to be able to come in and say, here are our concerns, we have some things. Long-term, there is some good, pretty powerful discussion that the state operates to scale right now. Some districts have a minus and plus, some have a seven-point scale, there's a recommendation to go with a standard 10-point scale, and it is, there's some decisions there. So some of this will be addressed, and we'll kind of really see what fall out there from the state for the, as the board's exact position as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to teacher working conditions survey update. Dr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, members of the board. I'm going to come down here so if I can make this presentation a little easier. Two words that I will emphasize to you that I think are important, that we talk about schools, those words are continuous improvement. That simply is, you know, are we better today than we were yesterday? You know, will we be better in a year than we were today? Those questions, you know, are part of what happens with Dr. Harper, around the advanced and faculty, and that's important to note. That's what that is, I mean, there's lots of, you read that report, the most great things that they talk about is going on with Cleveland County schools, and lots of policies. If you remember that team that came in, Dr. O'Baron, said to you to talk about the good things that were going on with Cleveland County schools. But like anything, there's always room to improve, there's always areas that we continue to get better, get better, get better. I liken that to the old coach who, you know, likes the game his team play, but also recognizes there's some issues that we want to improve and get better and get better at. So that's important. Part of that also, it comes in the teacher working condition survey that is administered. Our teachers participate in the working condition survey the last spring. Mr. Hooker presented a little bit of information on the state level last, last quarter. He felt it appropriate to move and discuss some of this with you. I've included a spreadsheet at your desk that, I will leave that spreadsheet a little bit, but that spreadsheet brings, gives you some specific data that may not be really deep in there that, if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to address that later. But it gives our participation as a result, as it ranks among school districts in our region and in some other districts. They may not be in our region, but are at our percentage in there, so you can see what we rank your participation and overall satisfaction. A little bit about the teacher working condition survey, again, I'm going to go over a little bit of what Mr. Hooker said, probably said it better than I could, but a little bit of information. The teacher working condition survey is administered once every two years. The most recent administration was this past spring, 2004. It was administered through March to 10th, April the 4th. It was first administered in 2002. There was a time period where that administration didn't happen, they didn't do it every two years, it took a break there, but the last six years, they've done it every other year, and it's a good, it's a good program for schools and districts to look and see what's going well, what are areas that. The results used as one component of school and district improvement, you guys approved school improvement plan, and you'll do that here in a couple of months, and some of the school improvement plans are driven by one of those here on the teacher working condition survey. One of our district improvement plans are driven by what's happening here in the teacher working condition survey. It's conducted through the local NCAU, that who administers that, not district or school administration, members of principal. The teachers get their login, they have to go to the NCAU representative, they couldn't go to the administrator, and some of you are aware of that. Survey is comprised of eight categories, time, facilities and resources, community support and involvement, managing student conduct, teacher leadership, school leadership, professional development, instructive, instructional practices and support. I have provided you on board docs all of that information, none of those reports are cumbersome to go through. I've also provided you some websites, if you want to come, go through and drill down, you can spend, our principals spend lots of time, Dr. Redd, has spent time looking at teacher working condition survey with our principals, but want to give you an overview here. There was a slight increase in participation in Cleveland County schools. Our participation is 96.49, which is very high. There was a time, I remember, years ago, Mr. Harrison still principal, Mr. Halling was still principal, where our participation rate was in the 40s. It was, it was early on in that process, but now our participation rate is very high. In every area, the percentage of Cleveland County school teachers that agree was higher than the state average. So that's, that's positive. Now sometimes it was a small difference, and sometimes it was a large difference, and you can look at that chart, one of the charts I gave you, compare every area, the state average to Cleveland County schools. In 2014, over 48% of the questions were scored higher by teachers than in 2012. A couple of different ways to look at that, and one that, there's areas that we have improved, there's areas that we may not have improved. One of the areas that went down is allowing us to stay testing, state requirements, and you can imagine, I think in that section, maybe one of eight stayed the same. Many of our, our things stayed the same, so that's there. This is important to me, the last bullet, which I think should be important to you. 91.7% of teachers in Cleveland County schools agree that Cleveland County schools is a good place to work, and that's the overall comparison there, to the honor of 90% of our teachers for life, that Cleveland County schools is a good place to work. I'm going to go real quickly, just through a few highlights, highlights that, that show some things that we're doing really well, and some things maybe we, we need to pay close attention to. Just real quick, I'm going to say 50% of our teachers agree that class sizes are reasonable, says the teachers have time to meet student needs. While that's only 75%, that's something we'd like to see higher. Again, that's higher than the state average, but that's something we can look at when we look at class. 74% or 74% agree that non-stressful time is provided insufficient. That's something the principals look at, when they look at master schedule, understanding three out of four teachers. Again, this is district data, each school would have their own data that would, that would be, it could be greater, it could be less, it could be the same. 82% of teachers agree that they're protected from duties that interfere with their essential role of teaching. That's, that's important, to make sure the teachers are protected from those things that interfere with teaching. Facility and resources, almost 83% agree that have sufficient access to appropriate instructional materials. And, you know, that's one of those where you can look at two ways, although we are quite high in the state, we would like to see that continue to increase where our teachers have the material they need. This is, I thought was important, 95% that school environment is clean and well maintained. Community sport and involvement, over 88% agree that the community members support teachers in contributing to the success of students. Over 94% agree that the school does a good job of encouraging, parent, and guardian involvement. My question, if you can continue to improve that, repeat, why we feel like we're doing a good job of that, was, was parental response? How do we do that? And we sometimes feel like we're doing a good job, but what are the results showing in some other areas that our, our schools and our principals still prove that they will continue to look at? Over 9% agree that community they serve is supportive of the school, and I believe that's true in our county. We have the right support for our school system, I believe that's important. Managing student conduct, over 60% agree that policies and great procedures about school conduct are clearly understood by the faculty. School closure, the state average, there is still above that state average. This is important, especially that we've moved into safe schools, we'll make sure we have a good climate environment, that over 96% of teachers agree that they work in the school environment that is safe. Teacher leadership, almost 90% agree that teachers are trusted, make sound professional decisions about instruction. Over 93% agree that teachers are encouraged to participate in school leadership roles, very close to the state average, but, but that's a high percentage. Over 77% agree that teachers have an appropriate level of influence on decision-making at the school. All that was mentioned, that over three out of four feel like they have an appropriate level of influence in school making decisions. That would be something as a principal I would look at in my school, what, what my teacher feel like their decision after that was made. Over 80% agree that they feel comfortable raising issues and concerns are important to them. That's an area that if teachers have concerns, we want them to be comfortable sharing those concerns and talking about that. The data there shows that over 80% are, but we want to continue to see that rise. 92%, over 90% agree that the school improvement team provides effective leadership at the school, that's very important. Above 9% agree that the school leadership makes a sustained effort to address teacher concerns about a variety of topics. This question on the teacher working condition survey had lots of topics, and, and they got to rate each individual topic, so instead of giving it to each individual topic, I tell you this is an average of an average. As a my teacher, that's not a sound my principal, but it gives a good representation of our teachers feel like that the leadership is, in their school is addressing things in a point of view. The last two, I believe, practices are our categories. 90% agree that professional learning communities are aligned with the school's improvement plan. It's important the things we're doing, our PLCs and our work is aligned to our approval plans. 77% agree that professional development is differentiated to meet the individual needs of students. Again, that's a, that's a good number, differentiation is something to support, that's one of those numbers we'd like to see continue to rise, so over 11% higher than the state. 88.6% agree that professional development offerings are paid for. One of our lower areas, and this is, as I commented earlier, about some areas that were a little higher in 2012 that have gone down in 2014, 53%, a little over 53% of our teachers agree that state assessment data are available in time to impact instructional practice. I'm quite honestly surprised that's 53. If you remember, we didn't get state data back until late October last year, so that is an area that is lower, in a significant decrease if you look at the chart that compares 2012, 2014. 95% of teachers agree that they use assessment data to inform instruction, and almost 92% agree that teachers have time to make decisions about instruction delivered, that active freedom is important there. We do have, this, this information is available on website. Sometimes we have folks call and ask about that, just under the about us tab, two people folks can go, that link is there. You also have the teacher conditions there. You can compare our district and other districts, every district is there, you can drill into the state and school, school-specific data and look at that. As we have conversations with our principals and our leadership teams at those schools, we look at that data with our principals and determine what are, what are areas that we, we need to improve. We understand, you know, we take those words seriously. We talk about continuous improvement, we want to be, continue to improve our schools, continue to be the best school that we can be. Standing paddle, and it's not an option. We have to continue to work every day, look at the areas that we, that we need to improve, continue to work in those areas. So I'll be glad to try to answer any specific questions you have in the teacher working condition survey, or, you know, as you look through that, feel free to contact us with any of that data we have to, to, to pull some out. Any specific questions?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make a quick comment and observation, probably should continually emphasize, as you noted and Dr. Harper noted, that we should also continue to strive for continuous improvement. I, I think this survey also affirms the opportunities for our teachers to, you know, express themselves and, and provide feedback in terms of conditions to help improve student, student learning. And I hope that this represents one of the opportunities, to give teachers an opportunity to, to engage and to make comments, productive, positive, productive comments, as well as dispel, you know, this sometimes myth and perception that sometimes teachers don't have the opportunity to express, you know, the conditions and their feelings and comments. But again, I think this certainly confirms that, while we always acknowledge that we should continue to look for continuous improvement in their golfing tournament.
And our administrative team, your central office, and administrative teams in our schools take this data very seriously, it's something that we, we talk about using our group of ones.
And I was also pleased that it's one of the highest in our, in our district, as well as above, the data was above the state average, and I was very pleased to see as well.
With, with, with teachers to take this
When, when, when teachers do take this survey, it's anonymous, right, they put it online, so the principal doesn't know. If the principal goes back to look.
The only report we, only report we did is the pers- participation rate, excuse me, so we know, and our principals encourage our teachers to, to go and participate, but we do want to please, of, of, of our teachers.
I went to the website that, that you can get to the, the individual schools and look at several, and several of our schools have hundred percent participation, which I think is important and wish that they all would, and maybe in time they, they will, because I, I would think that it is great, I mean, it's good information for us, but especially the principals to, to see how it's coming.
I agree with Chair, I, I went to almost every school and looked, and I was pleasantly surprised to see the number of comments and those scales that that felt like they could, you know, and, and where there's been some negativity that people are afraid to talk. That wasn't the feeling that I received when I went to those individual schools. Actually, I didn't get that feeling from any of the schools that I went to. So it was, I mean, I, I encouraged people to look at those, because it just wasn't the feeling that any of our schools, that teachers did feel like they have voice or that could talk to someone. So I was pleased, very.
Well, I'd like to still see the idea that I have heard teachers say that they were afraid to talk. So I would like to see that mail box put in at each school, and it can be anonymous, they decide they want to, they don't have to, and give the board your feedback in that box. Mr. Shaw goes around, I think every phase or whatever, and pick that mail up and deliver it back to the board and to you as superintendent, Dr. Fisher. So I'd like to see that, and I think we've got the card for classes that can make those boxes for us. And I, and I wouldn't mind taking care of that, band up money for lunch, provide, I'll see if I can find a cheap flower. But I would love to see that box put in every school where a person can put their suggestions or recommendations, do it back in it.
Well, we, we're continuing to look at, at ways to increase teacher feedback, and that's definitely one way to do that. And, and I, I was stressed for the slide, I didn't stress it in there, but, but I, but it's, this is, you know, one tool, you know, just like in the tool shed at home or your toolbox, you've got lots of tools. This is one tool that we use. And, and Mr. Black, you brought up some other tools and options there for us to get feedback. And getting that good feedback, both internally and externally is important, so we continue to make sure we get a wide range of feedback so we can get a true picture of what's going on in our schools and how we continue to make things better for the students and children that we can.
I like to appreciate when the survey started in two thousand two, it was an opportunity for free response comments. I don't think that's part of the survey anymore, is it?
I don't believe so, I think it's just all.
And, and it's a good survey, and it gives good information. There are sometimes some problems with some of the questions. I know if you have a question that says the administrators in my school enforce the rules fairly, well, if you got three administrators, what if two of them do, one of them doesn't? How do you answer that question? So there, there are some questions that pass me, some, some problems with them, and I wish that there was an opportunity for free response, I know that's not our decision and somebody, I wish they'd do that. That would take care of what, what Mr. Black said, if they could anonymously, not just check a radio, but they could write a sentence in there. Used to be able to, but not anymore, I wish the state would do that. But it's a, it's a good survey, I, I like you out of a puzzle, it's something that answers you, when you get a school and they're questioned, does your school, let the school improve it? Eighty-five percent will say yes, and fifteen percent will say no. That's not a pity, you can do what you want, so somebody's not, not with the purpose of that. So sometimes there's, there's some questions there, but a good survey, it's, it's good results, and you do hear every once in a while that everybody's unhappy, but when they get there and it's a bit of anonymous answers, everybody's not gonna, almost everybody's happy. So it's, it's, it's.
And that's one of the good things, and I agree about that, that's one of the good things about having a large percentage of people that participate, is you get a better true sample there of us. So I appreciate it, like I said, look at those school reports and think, oh, we're good.
I think it's just formidable that the schools that are, are teachers gauge, and I can do this, we'll, an acclamation of satisfaction, the majority of our folks have what's going on in the school system. To be able to say that we're beating the state average in every one of the categories, that's, that's pretty amazing. Because usually you'd think, well, there'd be at least a couple if we would. And certainly, I think there are some questions could probably be afforded better, but I think it is what it is, but it's, but I want to say, you know, working in school, I've seen the teachers feel these out. They take it very seriously, it is private, they do it on their own, it's totally anonymous, they know it's totally anonymous. We don't even get the results back from some months after the, it goes down to Raleigh and, and they, and they figure it out and give it back to the SOLO. It's really a, I think, a real great tool to use, and I think it really says a lot of good things about Cleveland County schools. When you look at our schools, in these various areas, we're still the other school system. We're not perfect by any means, but there's certain areas where we work on. But I think this is, we've got hot, hot teachers that are very, very satisfied with what we're doing.
Chair, you're right, it's taken seriously, I know when Chair and I are calling in for annual principal evaluations, the superintendent pulled out those working condition surveys, and that's one of the things we talk about during our evaluations as principals, so it's, it's taken seriously.
Yeah, I read it all.
Dr. Fisher?
Yes.
I know it's available to our staff, teachers out here, but are you telling our administrators to share that with them, do you think you can just let them know exactly what the district's feedback is on particular items that, you know, kind of keep them updated?
We will, and we touched on some of those in our district last week, and we continue to do that, and our schools use that data for school improvement, community network, some of those networks are our story, but with some of our schools, the wood team gives us to make sure they share those, those things. And I would say, you know, you can, you can test, you can check, go back and check on this, I, I didn't, I didn't choose all the good ones. I, I chose a wide variety, I chose some that are in the bottom there, that, so we wouldn't, wouldn't, we'd want to give you a good answer, but some of our, some of the questions aren't, as you said, and those are some things we have to take a strong look at and see, it is down here, your question.
Nice, one more question. Do we, do we any parent surveys that we?
That is not, we have not, in fact, and that's, you know, this is just a, a teacher working.
I understand it is, but it would be nice if we told some parents what they might be saying, to give them that.
Well, they, I think, I think quite new, but then I'm, then I'm proud of, is that ninety-six point five percent of the staff believe that they're working in a safe environment. I think that's huge. And I think this district has moved forward in the last few years to proving these campuses and make sure that they're safe. We haven't shared it with the community, and I would hope the community would look at us and say, we believe in you, to make this happen, because I don't believe we need to share that information with the citizens and tell them what improvement to do for safety issues, because by the way, but I think that's, that's huge, that our staff believe that ninety-six point six percent believe that it's a safe environment.
Thank you. Next item is personnel report, most pleasure to vote.
I think a motion to be approved for personnel report.
Second.
I move in second, if we approve the personnel report, which is in the superintending, in discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The personnel report is made up of four sections, and only two of those are actually action, not a top four, I believe. The first section, which is U hires, and the second section, which is leave of absence. The third and the fourth section, which are resignations and transfers, are basically for information, that's, that's actually the discretion of the superintendent. That first section of U hires and the second section of leave of absence is action a lot more. I move that we consider those two sections separately in the lower section.
You already have a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking to amend, the, the, the motion on the floor is to vote on the personnel report. My motion is to amend how we vote on that personnel report, I'm voting section one and section two, so.
But since we have it, we have to get the approval for you to adjourn, do you not?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so I think you made the motion, Dr. Fisher, is it?
I guess, well.
I think that, that there are some concerns with section one that do not exist in section two, and for the law board members to make a distinction from those two sections.
Are you going this just for tonight? So you're asking me to amend my motion to the superintendent?
Does he make a motion to?
But my motion's still on.
Yeah, your motion's still there, but Mr. Harris made a motion.
All right, but if you, you're asking, don't you have a motion?
Yes, yes, my, my motion to the superintendent.
Now, this is a separate motion to the superintendent. All right, so now we need a second.
Yes, sir.
All right, because there's a second, I suppose. And we vote on the option to amend.
Yes, sir, to amend, to amend, to the main motion, this was on the floor.
Since we have that, we can have discussion on the amendment.
Yes, sir, it's supposed to be the amendment, to the main motion.
I have some information regarding the reasons that, that, that's the way it is. And first, our part is in our policy, it's through authority and responsibility under thirteen hundred. The board says employing all staff members based upon recommendation of the superintendent as employed is safe by transfer. That's why, and it was in section four, that's a candidate. Before we initiate transfer personnel, five two seven zero, superintendent may assign and transfer any employee from one position to another in the best interest of the school system. But shall provide the board prior notice before transferring any principal or central office administrator. Seems that my superintendent has that authority on teachers, even without a form, but he does perform, his teachers will have, but he, all he's required to do is provide the board prior notice.
Yes, sir.
Nice.
I, I'm not through yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Resignations will be accepted, this is policy number five two nineteen. Resignations will be accepted on the half of the board by the superintendent for designated. That's in that third section that you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
So I, and I, I think, in fact, I know that attorneys have looked at this and felt that was the appropriate way to put that. June, so that it would be two sections, information and two actions.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused, so are we, you, your motion is to vote for the, where are we with the, the approval of employment recommendation, which is under the board?
Yes, ma'am.
And to separate number two, which the approval of leave of absence, you want those two separate?
Yes, and we don't vote on three and four, so I can't just say that.
That those are right.
Well, don't we already do that? We vote on one and two, but don't vote on three and four. Oh, I see, what, just one side, I see one.
There, there's four sections. Traditionally, we vote on one and two together, which is what the main motion was.
And you want to vote on one and two second?
Yes, sir, that's my.
But not individual?
No, sir, no, sir, just section one and section two.
That's the amendment?
Yes, sir.
You heard the description.
I'm sorry, I just still don't see the, 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 I, I just.
And, Kelly, you just want to do it just to not nod any others?
My motion is on for tonight.
And that's because there are some people on this that, or first of all, that, I need to know.
I, I, I think so, it's, and, and again, without my own names, that would be inappropriate, because it's almost like when we vote on all of section one and all of section two together, it's sort of like straight bar vote, you vote all of them or you vote against all of them. At least this would allow board members that wanted to vote, vote to, to this section, but they don't have a problem backing, that they can do that, that they can vote, for example, if somebody supported the leave of absence, they don't have any problem with leave of absence, this would allow them to vote yes to the leave of absence, but it would allow them to vote no to the U hires, if they're gonna do that. The way the main motion stands now, that it has to vote, or vote section one and two together, or section one and two, second, against it.
I guess, my, my thing is, even in that section one, if there are one or two people that you're vote against, you're still voting against all the others that are on there too, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Even if you're in favor of them, you're actually voting against them.
Yes.
Mr. Black?
I'd like for it to be all the time, not just the night, to separate, explain that just a little bit, because there are many cases that, well, I've voted on quite a few times, that I would have voted on some of these things, that I voted yes, but, but by being all in one group, outstanding on, when I feel, feel confident, I'm outstanding on it. And I'm voting, I'm voting no against the things that I really wanted to vote yes for.
Well, must you make a motion to amend, the amended motion?
That's the second. Well, I think, because I think Mr. Harris saw his motion, and I'd like for it to be every, well, I'd like the motion for it to be every minute. Then I make a motion.
Doctor, amend, wait to do it.
Right.
To amend the amended motion.
And I'll amend the amended motion, then.
All right. Mr. Motion amended, allow this to be.
That's not on the second.
All right. I did it right.
You did it right, yes, you did it right. So we're back, the motion on the floor now.
Is the, any further discussion on the motion on the floor, which is to amend, the air for commentary.
No, sir, I don't think so.
The way you do, Marty.
No, I don't think so.
Chief, just.
I was pleased, I thought.
I thought you were sure.
No, I just.
All right. Do you want to say? Did your motion speak?
Yes.
Any further discussion with personnel? If not all in favor, say aye. All votes?
No.
That's two, seven, four, five. Everybody agree? We'll be confusing. Thank you, and motion passes. Next, we ask some updates, budget update, Mr. Lee. Walking fast enough to light those gears? He didn't answer.
Actually, I didn't hear it, I can't, I'm sorry, that's all.
I just asked him to walk fast enough to change those gears.
Oh, absolutely, always. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Fisher, I want to give you a brief update on the budget. Again, it is still unfolding, we know what the budget is, we just don't have any information from DPI yet as to the actual impact of this. I want to kind of draw your attention to, as we begin the budget process, to, or begin this discussion, to, to look and see what tenor or tone this budget sets towards education and, and so by the time we finish, you can draw for your, your own conclusion exactly how education fare in this budget cycle. The first four slides in your budget, you've seen, I'm not going to go over those again, those were put there simply to give you a baseline to see where the.
to see where the governor's budget, the House budget, the Senate budget, where all of those began at, so you can see where education funding may well have fared from the beginning process to where it actually shook out in the end. We do know now that, uh... Turn it off. We do know now that the, the budget actually ended up five weeks late before ever being adopted. The short session pretty much became a, a long session over the General Assembly this time. But it has been adopted now, although it was late, and it has gone to the governor for his signature. The budget basically is an eight point one billion dollar budget for public education, K twelve. It is a fifty-eight billion dollar increase over the base budget where we began at. That is approximately what the A D M growth in the budget would, would have been, regardless if they'd done anything or not. It's not exactly, it's approximately that amount. Built into this budget, there are about three hundred plus million dollars worth of salary increases, as well as other budget increases built into that, and all that gets squeezed down into a total increase of fifty-eight million dollars. So you can see the impact to the budget, and what type of cuts actually occurred by the General Assembly. The average teacher salary, increase in this budget, you know, has been reported to be seven percent, is probably somewhere closer to five or five and a half. If we look at the position allotments in Cleveland County schools, that's the, the state O one teacher that we pay in Cleveland County school. It's going to be about a four point six percent increase when you factor out the longevity in that, that piece. As I reported to you, the first time we brought the budget update to you, there are going to be much larger increases that the local system is going to have to pay than what the, the state is actually going to pay because of the entry level people and the size of those increases. If you look at the, around here, six or seven, and we've got the tables in, in here a little later that we'll go through, those are where the significant increases are. Eighteen and a half percent. The range across the entire teacher scale runs from point three percent to eighteen point five percent. And the eighteen point five percent is a true eighteen point five percent increase because longevity is included in the salary tables, and, and those folks that are receiving those increases there do not receive longevity. So they're the real benefactors, and ones that are really getting the true benefit of this increase. This eliminates longevity for teachers, and the quote of the Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate was that we did not intend to eliminate longevity, we baked it into the salary scales. And that's true. It is into the salary scales. But if you were receiving longevity, you lost the turn of it with that going forward, and if you were at that top of the scale, uh, excuse me, if you're at the beginning of the scale, you receive it in, in one of those larger increases that are built into that. The, uh, top of the scale tops out at fifty thousand dollars. This is a not-so-nostalgic walk down memory lane, back to really July two thousand and six, whenever the, the salary scale and the supplements topped out a little above fifty-two thousand dollars, and you see that, so, so that's really where we're going back to. It is two thousand six for those folks at the top. It didn't go forward. And of course, you see that the top of the scale right now is fifty-five thousand dollars. Those people are, are frozen there, and they'll continue to receive that, that money because they're above the pay scale that is currently in place, but it won't go forward. And people, where you got an eighteen and a half percent increase this year because you were in your, your start of your career, and some point in time, you look at the end of your career, and you've got that ceiling that's been put in there that wasn't there before with the scales. Career, career status was not tied to the, to the salary increase, and that's a good thing because it, uh, you know, it was originally... The people that are at the top of the pay scale will receive a thousand dollar bonus, that bonus will be paid monthly. Our school-based administrators will see an average increase of a two, two percent. That increase, however, will range from point six five percent to two percent. And those at the top of the scale that do not get an increase will get a, will skip, will back up. Principals at the top of the scale that, that do not get the increase will get an eight hundred and nine dollar bonus. When you look at our school building administrators, your assistant principals, if you happen to be in one of those clusters, starting out as an A P, zero to nine years in your, uh, years of certification, you're stuck at the same pay level. There is not a salary increase built into that A P scale, it's the same that it was last year. So, like the teacher at, uh, excuse me, the principal at the top of the scale, those A Ps at the beginning stage, if they're in that, still in that zero to nine-year cluster, they will receive at one time, non-recurring, eight hundred and nine dollar bonus. They'll go away, and they will continue in that cluster until they get to ten years of service, and then will begin to move along the steps. And once they get to that point, then the average increase will be approximately a two percent salary increase, if whatever the person's salary was the year before. I say that to you because it is also similar for principals. Principals begin in a, at a cluster, as a principal one, all the way out to a principal eight salary table. Zero to thirteen years for a principal, as a principal one is one cluster. There is an increase in that category for principal one, and it is twenty-eight dollars a month. So, those principals that are in that cluster will get twenty-eight dollars a month, times twelve months, whatever that turns out to be, it's three hundred and some, some bucks. And that will be the increase for those principals right there. Everybody else that gets out of that beginning cluster will receive a two percent average increase across the scale until they top out of the A scale. The top do not change in the principal scale either. At the far end of the principal scale, the principal eight, which is a large high school, if you're in that category, zero to twenty-three years is the cluster for that beginning stage right there. If you, if you happen to be in that zero to twenty-three years, you're going to stay there until you get to the twenty-fourth year, and your increase is going to be thirty-eight bucks, oh, excuse me, thirty-six bucks, come on. It's one of those things that all the glues, if it's not gold. The non-certs will receive a five hundred dollar salary increase. There's two things I need to, to remind you about this, and basically, that's anybody that's not paid off of a teacher scale. So, all the work that you put into trying to implement the local salary scale a couple of years ago, and the work to, to get those salary increases implemented, all of that is going to go away. You're going to go back to a situation that, that we had way back then, whenever we have a custodian. We, we put all custodians on a years of service and, and a step, and, and had something that made sense. Now, then, as an example, if you're a ten-month custodian, and we'll say you're, you're at step fifteen, it wouldn't matter if you were ten months or twelve months. There'd be some salary level that would be associated with that for years of service of a custodian. Now then, there will be a salary level for that step, for a ten-month custodian, which will be fifty dollars, not more than it was this past year. If you're at that same step for a custodian as a twelve-month employee, it's not going to be the same salary, it's going to be what it was last year, plus forty-two dollars, because the increase is a five hundred dollar annual increase. It's really going to mess the scale up. And, and you have a situation where you have a, uh, ten-month custodian, who, let's just say, it was same as a, a twelve-month, and his salary was eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, but that salary may be eighteen hundred dollars itself right now. So whenever you, they go from a ten-month to a twelve-month position, the monthly salary actually is going to slightly go down, if you keep your steps in place, because of that five hundred dollar annual increase of twelve months versus ten months. The other thing that I would say to you about the non-certified scale, as Mr. Quest has, has so eloquently pointed out to our, our legislators, down on Kemper Road, you have two sets of mechanics. D O T mechanics, school bus mechanics. The D O T mechanics are, are pulling wrenches, doing a very important job, but they're working on the trucks, they're hauling sand and gravel and brine. They're going to receive a thousand dollars annual increase in five bonus payments. You go right next door to the end of the street, and those mechanics that are pulling wrenches, and they're working on the trucks, they're hauling, there's children that this community has entrusted us with, they're going to receive five hundred dollars in net bonus payments. The last part of this is that the educational supplements, they will remain intact, they finally got, got put back into the thing, to the scale. I will tell you that there was a little bit of, uh, probably a dig to say, I got you in, in that process. It used to be that if you were National Boards and you had a master's degree, your National Board was twelve percent higher than what your, your master's salary was. Now then, everything is calculated off the A scale. So if you receive a, a master's degree, it's ten percent higher than what your A certificate salary would be in. If you, again, also, you see at National Boards certification, it is twelve percent higher than what your A certificate salary was, not what your master's paid was. Put salary tables in there, just to say to you that if you look at those salary increases, particularly around year five, six, seven, and everything, that looks great, and it is good. And I'm glad that our, our teachers are, are getting a, a good increase. But if, if you put that in, uh, terms of if you were a, a craftsman, and you were a cabin maker, apparently around your fifth year, you would have made as much improvement in your craft as you're ever going to make. And over the rest of that, that year, or over the rest of that, uh, term of your tenure, you're going to become less and less valuable to the system until you get down to the point that ultimately, you have a point three percent increase in value that you're adding to the system. So, it, it's great, I'm glad our teachers are getting an increase, and I hope that they see this, but I hope that they also look at it in the big picture and long-term, and, and say that there was a day that I'm not going to be at year five or six, and someday I'm going to be at year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, or they really want anything from me at that stage. There's been a lot of discussion about teacher assistance and, and whether they were funded or they were not funded. Teacher assistance reduced a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars in recurring funding. They were increased twenty-four million dollars in non-recurring funding, meaning that that funding is for this year only and will go away. So ultimately, the reduction in teacher assistance is a hundred and five million dollars. I will tell you that, uh, the, the chief budget writer for the Senate, Mr. Ballard, and that's a great name for it, for a budget writer, it really is. Uh, however, and this is reflective of my age, so I apologize to Dr. Fisher, who may not be able to remember James Bond, but it, it may be more reminiscent of this money, money opposed to Mr. Ballard, and you see the impact that this, uh, budget has had on, on education. But his comment is that we cut the budget eighty-five million dollars, which is what schools last year converted to other funding categories such as supplies, teacher, whatever. So there's no reason for schools to have to implement any teacher-assisted positions. That comment is disingenuous, advanced, and it's just flat wrong and worse. We can decide where that, that turns out to be. The funding is cut to letting schools that actually waver teacher assistance and involve teachers, but if they ain't getting the budget, aren't English, no question of it, there is a cut there, in this area. There's a hundred and thirteen million dollars of teacher-assisted funding that has been moved to lottery funds. Those monies have to be reauthorized each year by the General Assembly. Question is, is that simply a way to, to move it? You cut it without it really ever cutting, because if you don't reauthorize it, it wouldn't be there to give, and that would be a little bit of another thing. Our central office, we cut three percent. Transportation cut. The, uh, Department of Public Instruction, we cut ten percent. And they, this is, I guess, cut it away to excellent. They, they, it was a continued treatment, really cutting D P I extremely hard. So they cut the ten percent this time, and then put it into statutes, a set of two pending for women to respond to, to others people, maybe they would, maybe they should have gone out with purpose, opposed to, to being restricted in that process. Funding for driver's training is deleted from the budget effective July one, two thousand and fifteen. This legislature line here says that you can charge an additional ten dollars, up to sixty-five dollars for the, the families that, uh, that you're providing driver's training to right now. If you look at the funding with the current charges, it's somewhere around two hundred and twenty-five bucks a person. Next year, you can even charge sixty-five, but the statute said you can do it with a license, you're on the training. So this is another funding mandate, as it stands right now. Just going to figure out where that's going to come from next year. The more disturbing piece of this budget is that it eliminates A D M growth going forward from the base budget. And that's been a sticky point that the General Assembly has, has always argued, uh, that... And that's been a sticky point that the General Assembly has, has always argued, that we gave the old ones that we gave last year, and that's partially true in the fact that the budget may have gone up a little bit in total dollars, but they never even funded what the growth of the budget was for the total additional students that are coming in. And this will eliminate that argument because A D M wrote about the end of budget, DPI said that they will not be able to provide planning allotments for us, but if we take the budget worth it in last year and give you a dollar more and say that you spent more on education, that would be a true statement. That takes us to the end of the slide. If you want to have any to try to respond to any questions or comments that you may
have.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Lee, for going through that nightmare of a budget. I did want to ask you a question. I did see the cuts of course of TA funding from the state level. What does that mean for us locally? You know, what are we looking at? Are we going to be the same? We're not going to have to do anything this year?
It's thirty-six to thirty-eight positions. We will look to try to do that across time, but we will match our allotments. Sometime during the course of the year, the amount of funding turns out to be, we think that the positions that we have frozen to this point, that we're about halfway there, and we think that by the end of the year, we will be where we need to be.
So I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
Thirty-six to thirty-eight positions is the impact of different kinds of schools. We do not have the actual lot from DPI here, we're just doing the percentages that they said.
So we're losing thirty-six to thirty-eight?
Yes.
Is there anything we would do about that?
Let me make sure that everybody has information to go back to this information I sent you last week. Our plan is not to cut teacher assistants. Our plan is not to send anybody off. That's, I guess, the easiest way. But our plan is, we estimate until final allotment comes in, David, we're going on estimation, we're looking, it's about thirty-six to eighty-eight positions that we're looking at. We've got some positions that we can not replace. We've got some that we won't refund through attrition, but we'll look at those positions and then not replace those. That may, you know, it's going to create some work for the law or HR department to say, make sure that the schools that maybe have an excess, you know, schools may be under the need to bounce that through the course of the year. I'm not saying that we won't bring you some teachers, if we have a teacher assistant, that we may have to hire in this position because we don't have to transfer, we don't have something we can move into that position. But with what we have right now currently, that we're not going to hire. And then what we have, we think we can get through the year or through the next twelve months through normal attrition, we feel like we can be able to meet, go up the budget and be able to do that. So we're going to work with that. Our intention is not to send TA home, not hire them. So we're staffed in those areas of the law, we're looking at, if we can get some adjustments, we have some TAs, some teacher assistants that will come out, maybe transfer, create some other places. We've got some open, if the law can transfer. Your school was over and Mr. Lawrence's school is not, we may have to transfer over. Make sure we're staffed and have appropriate, we're trying to keep, we're going to work with that folks. Basically, if it's like that, it puts in a good letter situation with the law, if it's like that, this might be the first one to sit, we're working on that. They communicate on that since long since it's a budget.
But there are some teacher assistant positions that you're going to have to do.
That's true.
So in essence, we are losing.
We are losing.
We are losing those people, some, we're losing those positions. You know, I mean, last year, we thought the budget cycle could get any worse, a little bit, and so we don't want to say it can't get any worse or else it will get even worse next year, but because it just amazed me, it was like every day I was checking my email, waiting to see what I'd, it made us look like it was not me, and I don't know what they, I don't know what they correct up there, but anyway. One, and this is just a very small part of it, but you talked about the supplements, the education salary supplements. That's only, so there still is no incentive for teachers who don't have their master's degree, there's no financial incentive for them to get their master's degree grad?
If they were not already inappropriate as of July, two thousand and thirteen, that is correct unless they're in a nursing position or a position that requires a master's degree. There's only a few of those.
Okay. So to the general assembly?
Yes, they were already enrolled.
Yeah, they're okay. But to the General Assembly, advanced degrees are not worth anything in education if you don't already have them. That's what they're saying. And this is something else. Since I can't remember, but you know, and I appreciate you giving us these updates and letting us know because we heard you say all that letters is not built. I mean, when they came out with the big announcement, it sounded really good, but when you look down into it, it's not, it's the, I mean, we're all appreciative of the raises that our folks are getting, but it's just not as great as what they're saying.
But they're really squeezed, and there are substantial increases. And again, we're appreciative of that, and I'm glad to see a teacher be able to get a nineteen-and-a-half percent increase because, first of all, that's a lot of money, percentized and everything, but you've got to look down the road and say, about in my twenty-fifth year, about my thirtieth year, is it really that good for you? And you can say the top's been squeezed down, but there is a ceiling there.
Richard.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Trevor maintains awkwardness in this very discouraging outlook, but I guess I just want to make a couple of quick observations without appearing to be cynic, to be quite honest, but as Madam President said, that the budget reflects, as I discern, that we don't value the vast education in light of the fact that we're trying to provide world-class education, you know, to our one-to-five million students across the state, that the experience of teachers seem to be not as valued as they are. And the fact that we do not now, we're not acknowledging A D M role, you know, as our population continues to increase, which would also imply that maybe our class has continued to get larger, sort of depicts a very dismal outlook. And again, I don't want to editorialize this, but it is very frustrating to remain optimistic and frustrated to try to provide world-class education, you know, for our students in light of this. And finally, let me just say again, I will share, this is in the backdrop, this is that it does not happen to happen, except that they're also committed to making sure that the wealthy continue to get, you know, their tax cuts, businesses get that tax cut, and the children are seen to be held prisoner to this. But again, that's somewhat editorializing, I have to apologize for that, Mr. Chair, but those are just my comments and my observation.
Anybody else down?
Yes, on the TA and the, I think that our stipends is our number-one goal, and I think everybody up here will go along with that one-hundred percent. Are they, and I don't want anyone to lose the job, not nobody, but could we not cut a secretary instead of cutting our staff at the school for our students? Or and look, you know, at other avenues to save a lot to, on that. I've got two questions. That's my first. Could we not make other avenues instead of it always going toward those teacher assistants, it seems like? Are they, do we have a secretary extra? Do we have a principal? But I have brought up, and I've brought up that I feel like that they ought to be assistant principal at every one of our schools today, and I brought that up, and I hope that we can find money for that because if a principal's out and there not nobody there, the secretary is running the school or he a teacher, I just feel like that when they're in, our students that are number-one goal and everyone up here will stand up back. And I'm not wanting the secretary to lift their job, don't get me wrong there, but...
Is that your second question?
No, my second question is, you said a thousand dollars on that DOT with five-day bonus?
Yes.
And our bus people, five-hundred for two-days' bonus. Did last year, did the school people get a five-day bonus, but they couldn't use the construction days to take one of those days off?
It was five, five long school days.
And the bus department got that, but DOT didn't get five days then?
I have no idea.
Okay, well, I don't think so, but...
Because state employees got the, well, that was a state employee.
Okay, good. So everybody got that five days. Well, I, well, I promise y'all, call Raleigh tomorrow. If they don't give it to one, they'll give it to all, they'll be spread across the board.
If I can answer your question just real quickly and briefly, and then I don't want to get too much, but, you know, we're always looking at positions that we can, we can absorb, we can do some things. We've got folks that are doing internals, that, you know, they'll build up some positions and do some different things. So, you know, the short answer is, is we're always looking at items, and that's why we've taken this approach to be able to say what we can do, we'll take this slow approach to doing that, making sure that we understand, you know, not only our students, our number-one priority, as I mentioned in our pitch of every trip, student learning, student achievement is job number priority. We have to do the things that we can do to continue student achievement, student learning. So, you know, I can assure you that we are all looking at the positions, saying, can we do this, can we do that? And the roles of the school personnel are changing, you know, everybody's doing, you know, everybody's doing more, but everything that folks at school level do, it's how's that impact on student learning, student achievement. So the short answer is yes, we are continuing to mainly, I always positions, that's because we do that, and that's why we take a lot to make sure we staff ourselves.
Mr. Roper.
Yes, I have a question. Longevity, which is always a big deal as a former state employee, that's something we always look forward to. Does it only affect certified teachers? Does it affect the longevity, does it affect administrators?
It affects those that are paid on the teacher's scale. Everybody else will retain longevity, and I didn't say this when I looked at the slide. If you were, if you received longevity as a teacher last year, you will receive longevity this year on your anniversary date for the last time, if it'll go away from that, and it will be prorated as to whatever your anniversary date turns out to be through this past June. So, you know, it could be fifty percent or whatever it just turns out to be, but they will receive longevity this year on their anniversary date if they received it last year. However, if you were, again, doing age, you go back to Maxwell Smart, if you were eligible to receive longevity for the very first time this year, meaning that you completed ten years of service, you were that close, but you missed it in that process. So you had to have received it last year to receive it a prorated amount this past year, or excuse me, a prorated amount based on this past June, June thirty, like, number of months you earned during that period.
You, and I might be going through this, but just getting questions out here. If you're a certified teacher and you lose all longevity, and you move on to the assistant principal and the principal, will you jump back and get your longevity back?
If you're a school-based administrator right now, you will receive longevity, and whenever they go into those positions, they would, they would be able to receive longevity.
So they would reverse, in a sense, and make you start to sleep, or what type of check or loss for longevity?
Well, just on my anniversary, I might be a bit emotional.
Well, and my other comment is, is this part of, the General Assembly has some PR people with their headlines with the, you know, TA cuts at several percent, that they forget they'll stay in the hall of honor, and that's the risk of the story, and that's the part that they leave out is the risk of the story.
Who's toward Mr. Ballard next?
I just have a comment. Over the past few weeks, I've talked to many teachers, and overwhelming the comments from the teachers, what is, I would rather not have a raise and allow teacher assistants to keep their jobs because we need them. So I think that's the way, I think the majority of the teachers feel that way, that they would have rather left it the way it was, that they feel like that our students and our teacher assistants. And that's how I'm going to comment.
Thank you. Who's told?
If I understand this correctly, what we're talking about with teacher assistants, basically, from this teacher assistant we get at the end of the year, to the teacher, through this coming year, we're going to end up receiving probably thirty-six to thirty-eight positions we're going to lose. That's probably maybe about seven-hundred thousand dollars?
Actually, about a million bucks.
About a million bucks. So we're going to actually have a reduction in force of thirty-six to thirty-eight people, but hopefully we won't be laying anybody off, we're not planning to, because we're going to, as they retire or quit or move off or whatever, we just want to replace them. But we're going to end up paying those people out of our local funds and out of other funds that whatever amount it takes to get them through the year without actually losing. So it's actually, we're going to actually, it's going to affect our budget by, in other words, what I'm saying is, we're trying to do everything we can to keep laying people off, even though it's, we're going to have to pay the difference. The fact that state's not paying their salary and we keep these thirty-six or thirty-seven for the months that they're staying, we're going to end up paying their budget, paying their salary.
There will be a cost involved. We know that we will right-size ourselves before the end of the year, but there will be a lot of the cost, yes.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, David. Now we have a little treat with our Director of Communications, Greg Shaw, who's going to explain another change.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Fisher, President of the Board, thanks for allowing me. I was going to talk a follow-up on how to pull show plan, but I think I'll just digress and get to the right to the website. This is an opportunity to change to go with our new platform, with, as you know, Google Sites just came into play with the Google Mail and the Drive. So we have a new platform that's been introduced, Cheryl and her team to the entire district, which by the way is fantastic. Well, this is an offering that comes along with it to have websites for teachers, for schools, and if we would like to make the change to the district site as well. So this is something that we put together, all the content has been moved, moved over. I believe it's a little cleaner, it's easier to read, very easy to navigate, and if you use it on your mobile device, you can thumb through it pretty quickly. So that's a nice added plus. But we'd like to bring it to you today to take a peek at and see if you have any comments that you would like to submit, changes you would like to make, just to get your feedback and how we can move forward. One of the better things about Google Sites is it is going to help us move a little faster. Over the last couple of years, we've had, we've made tweaks to the server to make it move as quickly as possible for all the school sites and here on the Central Services campus. This moves quite fast, and it's really nice because we can integrate a lot of tools into it. So as you can see, the calendar on the right side, so if you'd like to keep scrolling, there's two years worth of calendar entries that you can... So, as you can see, the calendar on the right side, so if you'd like to keep scrolling, there's two years worth of calendar entries that you can go all the way to twenty fifteen, sixteen, if you like. Uh, but just wanted to bring that to you today, take a look at, and if you do have any comments that you would like to submit back or feedback, we'll make those adjustments. But if you'd like, if you would bless it at some point, we'd like to move forward and, and make the change, I think, for the betterment of the district. One of the beauties of this, also, the individual departments, uh, which you can't really tell, but if you click on departments and you can go into offices of school readiness, technology, they can administrate their own page. Also add their own files, they don't have to go through me, uh, it's, it can be maintained individually, so it's a little bit more real-time than what I could ever provide as being the caretaker of all the content. So, that is a service that I think, uh, has been a long time coming, and this implementation moving to Google Sites will allow us that flexibility to, um, let the, let the departments really man their own services. Do you have any questions, just out of, as you can see, we've got fourteen days until school starts. Uh, that's the countdown clip, uh, ticker on the left side, and we do have some social media components, but otherwise, I think if you'll take some time to thumb through it, you may either grow and enjoy it, or you can give some feedback.
Is it, is it, that it's not allowed later?
No, I don't know. I can provide, well, the link was provided through board docs, but I'll, I'll shoot it to you, and...
It's right there on here.
Yes, it's on the board down.
It's not on ours, but...
We'll look forward, by tomorrow, and I'll give that to you. And, Mr. Shaw, as Mr. Shaw said, this was kind of, we wanna be able to, to bring this to the board, and I, I just seen it, uh, one or two days ago with me, that he was working on, so he, you know, pointed to me. I would encourage you to thumb through that one, to kind of throw that out there for first, and I continue to maintain our current site, uh, and we'll send Mr. Preissels and let them look through it. And, uh, see some advantages of the C D, and after seeing like, uh, the customer service technology, uh, our internal customers, but our external customers, uh, Mr. Shaw, we see you, uh, just at your, your position, I mean, you said around half looking for links to this. So, as you, uh, as you, as you, as you said, to do that, to look through there, and feel free to not make Mr. Shaw any questions, I'd like to see. Uh, one of the, the features I have is just considering our website form, our website designs, being able to, oh, this, this form was in this, uh, this category, I think that's where I'm at, now we're doing sites. So, we just wanna make sure that, as, you know, we're providing local sites for folks to use, uh, as we, as we, so, I'd very take a look at that. We'll, to let you guys be the, uh, first ones to, to look at that. And when and if we do make this transition, we'll also add a lead that goes back to the old site. So, until they kind of familiarize themselves with the new navigation, they can go back and take a look at the, the old site and report what they need through that as well. Until we have some time that just finally passes, then we can make the, pull that lead out.
I, I like the tiles at the top, across this corner, right down there at the bottom, I think that, that's a good corner.
Mr. Chair, can I have any part of the observation?
I don't know.
Why, do you?
Yeah, depends on the weight. I know, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'll try, one observation is, uh, that, that got my attention when I looked at that, and, and I think it's what really is the mission. And I think we were very intentional in highlighting the mission, very exceptional education opportunities every day for every student. And I think we need to continue to be intentional, you know, by part of this, this plan, our mission and our vision of their opportunity, so that we can internalize and develop this ideal that our vision, the mission is to provide exceptional education opportunities every day for every student, and I like that, and, and I think that's something.
Mr. Hooker, it seems like you believe in that mission, which could also coincides with the campaign, "I Believe in Cleveland County Schools."
We need to be intentional.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would say this looks great, um, after all the talk about change funds, that it's good to come back, you know, now, and when we look at this site, I think it looks great. In the sense, a couple of things I would like to see, maybe a message, um, putting our kids in a video format somewhere on the front page, maybe they can play it, and I know it's easy to do, and, uh, another thing, I don't know, you probably already have this up, if you go to an article, the New Grand Press, the secondary, if we can click on that and somewhere make, you know, pretty easy and shareable to Facebook, you know, putting that good news out, where they can just do like one click and share it pretty quick, I, I just think that, as interactive as the internet is, I think that will be really cool, because I think that's good news, and I would wanna share Dr. Nixon's been hired, so, put it out there pretty quick. But I think everything was great, I'm already, I mean, my question, when is it gonna go live? I would like to see that.
I think there's a few more tweets we can get, we can make that happen, but again, I think if we get feedback from everyone, just to make sure that we're taking everyone's thoughts into account, especially principals as well, I think that would be a good way to move forward, just to...
Will you make it available?
Absolutely.
I'm sure you're gonna get inundated, but you heard here tonight, just through this brief thing, so, better to keep all your contact numbers.
I think it's S R.
You guys are saying we're gonna...
Oh, okay, right.
Greg, putting those, that's really blocks students, and some of them think it's great sport to drive a heck into this one. Aren't you comfortable with the local security that Google has given us?
I don't think we could ever match that locally. Absolutely. But if they, if they can take it down, then I've got it backed up, we'll put it back.
Thank you very much, unless anybody else. Next, we have an action item, I believe, Ms. Bean, you're gonna talk to us as for approval of the Head Start plans, I believe.
Dr. Hamrick, board members and Dr. Fisher, there's two items, the Head Start plans, and then the Policy Council member selection. That's how we select members to the Head Start Policy Council, not how we select children. So, those two items.
And I believe we've had these, um, our board docs, which is the, uh, meeting is scheduled, uh, what's the pleasure, what can we vote for both of them at the same time, or do we need to do it individually?
I'm, I'm okay with both of them.
What's the pleasure, both of them?
Move to approve the Head Start education and early childhood development plan, health services plan, ongoing monitoring plan, school readiness plan, and file council election procedure for the board at present.
Say.
Thank you. We, uh, the motion has, has been well expressed by Mr. Thurman, uh, and it's been seconded by Ms. Falls. Any discussion? If not, but, Mr.?
Just quickly, uh... I can't remember what it said, but I was impressed with it, you know, hours, hours, volunteer hours.
That was the annual, uh, report to the public, I think I announced that to you today, yes, thank you for your note.
And, or may it participation, or follow-up, I should say, participation, I always appear as if I was on the board council, and I'm glad to see that that's been taken.
Thank you.
Any further comments? If not, motion's on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Arbroe, I believe you're gonna discuss a, possibly make a recommendation on the floor for right of way that you put on board docs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, uh, board members, uh, the town grover has requested a transfer of property to create a permanent right-ofway on Dogwood Drive. Dogwood Drive is the, uh, street that runs off of Carolina Avenue on the north side of the Grover campus. Um, we currently, this is a, an existing road, and we currently use it for our student drop-off and pickup, uh, we use it for access to our K classroom. Our staff uses it to access parking in the, the back of the facility. Uh, it's my understanding that they need this right-ofway before they can be funded for this, uh, construction project on property. So, uh, you know, and again, I do stress that it's not looking to, uh, relocate or change the drive, it's just to, uh, to have a permanent right-ofway. They have a, a right-ofway for about five hundred feet of, uh, Dogwood Drive now, but there's about a three hundred foot section that, uh, there's no right-ofway at all, so, uh, it's, and, and they're asking for forty-five foot right-ofway, um, so, uh, be, glad to answer any specific questions. Yes, sir.
What about people on the other side of the room?
Um, and, and again, I, I'm, the majority of the, of the, the section that's beside the, uh, playground is the area that there is a fifty-foot right-ofway there now. It's just, uh, Dr. Luce, can you bring that up? Let me just, take a second. The highlighted area is the area where we're referring to, just for a point of reference, the, uh, school sits by seven o'clock here. Dogwood Drive comes down Carolina Avenue, and they have a fifty-foot right-ofway in this area. This, this, uh, branch here is where we do our student drop-off and pickup. This area here is where we have access to the K classroom, they're looking to have a permanent right-ofway in this area.
So, if my understanding correctly, that there was a road built on our property, and we didn't know it?
Well, I don't know.
And also, everybody else is there, too.
I don't know that there's, there's, but there is a, a, a road, Dogwood Drive, I wouldn't know that it also serves these homes out in this area. There's, uh, five homes in this area that, uh, I will share, we, if you remember back, a few months back, we had issues with this code. And that has been replaced, and that was replaced, and really, uh, they had changed elevations to be high here, so, an area that was once paved is, is no longer paved, and they're looking to, my understanding, to widen and resurface.
They didn't make the code prepared, did they, or do we have to?
No, we didn't.
The tag?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Arbroe?
No, we didn't, though, I know we did, yes, sir.
My, my concern on this is that, you know, this area, y'all section is an L shape, ordinarily, with, with, all that land is ours, and the land above it is ours. And basically, the city is asking to go ahead and bust to give the right-ofway to the road that's, that's existing, even though it doesn't belong to anybody. And more than you would put a road off to the side of your property. Instead, this road comes closer to the school, closing up that in the future, it might appear we're building expansion or whatever. And, uh, I wrote out, looked at that, uh, today, and it appears the road could possibly be straightened out, it's gonna be an L shape, it's a straight section across there. Would move the school, the road further for our school. Uh, one of the concerns that I've had simply is how close it comes to our school, the fact that this Dogwood Lane now is a little tiny, uh, barely one lane wide. Uh, the area road has probably very low traffic on it, but with, uh, adding the right-ofway, widening out there, getting that the city, road being improved, going up into some undeveloped land, uh, very well could develop into a much heavier traffic flow, we've had people come down making a hard right, going through our school property, making a hard right right onto the road. I would love to see us being asked to city grover to straighten that road out, move it closer to the property line, so we're not cutting off that much of our, our, our land, the land is closer to our school. As that road comes close to our building, that means we can't build there, we'd have to face somebody, give the way for a right-ofway that can just give it away for a dollar, or the contractor's to give it the right-ofway for one dollar. Uh, I don't have trouble with giving it a right-ofway, but I do, that's a concern to me, that it being that close to the school, uh, that it may, uh, may end up being a, a much heavier travel road. I'd like, uh, to see us talk to city grovers to, about the possibility of moving that right-ofway that they're asking, moving it a little bit, uh, further to the north, straightening that out, moving it a little bit away from the school. Uh, if you see, move it a hundred feet, go down to where the corporate is, and then straight across to where the right-ofway is now, uh, that's a, a pretty flat piece of land that is up at the property line. Uh, our property line actually isn't going, but it's a pretty flat roof there. To see if we could possibly just negotiate, I, I would like to make a motion that we table this, and so our next board meeting, give you an opportunity to talk to the city about possibly, uh, moving the request for the, uh, right-ofway.
Is there second to that motion? And moved and seconded, uh, any further discussions, Mr. Blaine?
Yeah. The, the track of land beside the yellow, there, the, 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 right there, right there, that there is a few white, little white houses, it, it in there, a couple houses right there. Okay, that, that, that big track of land, I think I know who owned it there, uh, the one behind it right there, does that say Daniel Blanton? Well, I can't see that part.
It's not printed on here.
Uh, the top name, well, I think it is, uh, I have heard it by the dollars, in other words, about, you know, coming down by there.
Well, just, just to point out, far as a, a point of reference, Mr. Holt, this is our property. And, and Mr. Holt's request is to contact, and, and I've talked with him here lately for a number of times, I'll be more glad to see the possibilities of moving that. Uh, I will share this, I know at this point in time, their plan is to, to make repairs to the existing road. And, and, and any conversation of relocation, uh, and I do not know the history of why that turned, it came off the property line, I don't know if it's floodwater, or, you know, but I can, I feel very comfortable in communicating that, and that information with the county government, if I see that. I will say this, from, just from my perspective, I think wherever the road is, I think it's in the best interest of our school district, for them to hold that, to maintain that, take five years or something, what happened.
So, let me just, y'all are willing to see if they'll actually relocate the road, after they've already got a paid road there, and all they're wanting from us is just right-ofway?
Yeah, we see that right-ofway through the queen.
No, but what, what I hear, Mr. Holt, saying is, get them to straighten out the road, and that, that means more grading, more painting.
Something, some, but it would also mean that where that road has ended, and our school is located, our school building is located probably, uh, a hundred and fifty feet, uh, two hundred feet away. If it comes up there, that means that we have to stay fifty feet or so away probably from the right-ofway, or from the building, it's really limiting us to adding on to the, uh, we've got two trailers at the end of that building now. We probably couldn't put a third trailer out there, it's gonna be too close to the right-ofway, so it's gonna limit some, some construction that we could do possibly using that land. Uh, it's not a, it's not a lot of move, but that's not, uh, that, none of that belongs to the city grover now, all that belongs to the school system, but if it actually, we're gonna collect by, they're actually basically asking for about a half acre of our land, uh, to be given to over a dollar. Uh, and the land that's on the other side of that move is basically worthless to us.
Yeah, and my concern is, as I was at, and I wish I would have studied this a little more, was if you come up to the end of the road, this property here, right now, it is open land, and the, what, what I have heard is that if there was a road here that can cut through, then they could develop this property back here. Um, so I'm wondering if the, the town is, I mean, I would just need more information to, to see what, are, are they trying to use our property to gain access? To cut through another road that's not showing on this map, all of, I don't have that, I, I think we need, what we do not need is this to be, I mean, traffic, I mean, we're trying to curb traffic away from our school. I really thought this traffic this range was the town grovers, but now that I hear that it's not, and they're trying to acquire our property for a dollar, it would concern me, we don't want traffic here. That's what we try not to do, is to, to curb traffic to, through our schools.
Well, and, and follow up, I think it's been the reception for years of Grover, because everything looks to me like the parking drives, location mobiles. the college, every, it looks to me like the property drives, location mobiles, decisions have been made like that was, a right-of-way there, decisions have been made in the city with the design plan, and I, and I know that history, but I will share, and I think this fall brings a good point, if you remember back when we talked about, before they replaced the culvert, there was discussions of bringing a through road from a subdivision to connect here, but I think it's obvious, put my support for that option, so they went ahead and replaced the culvert with the existing drive. Now, as far as perhaps the extension here in the Dogwood, we've not had any conversations, but I'll agree, I don't think it would be the best interest of the campus that that is cut through. It is a, it is a dead industry now, and I can say, I'm not ready to issue that sort of thing, because currently, we do stack on Dogwood as our stacking for student drop-off and pickup.
I guess the question that I would, the question, is there a town line on this that they need to see?
Well, they've been pushing for this, but you know, I'm not sure that this would have to be a more approved island in consultation, but again, it's a place that this board ought to go back to.
Yeah, I guess the other thing is, if we're using that, our property that voted as a stacking area, once we turn it over to the Town Grover, what would be having the option that they would be using that as a stacking area?
Now, from this point, we are stacking Dogwood, where they do currently have a 50-foot right-of-way. The actual road would be used here at more of our casing, but we did use that to vote on stack there, every car gets it that way.
I'm willing to get access.
Oh, or they want the new car?
Yes. If I, if we have the, the actual flood, the parents take a ride, and then we drop off in this area, then they takes it back out.
For them to stack on Dogwood?
Yes, sir. See, Dogwood is a, probably a maintenance drive, and we use that to keep cars off. And actually, I will share this, Verda's former school has two drop-offs, we use to fund as well as the cost of them, and I, and I will share this, you know, to get a purchase of a home, it's off of Carolina, give us, make options down, we're ready to create a better drop-off pickup.
I would also, if you have a conversation, to see if there's an option, or if they can interplay for our stacking, so the traffic can be, there's nothing seen. Will they be building a interplay?
I'll think it's a...
Not enough price, but they're just going to do, just repay the small...
And they have, you know, the 50-foot right-of-way, they have an option to get a, too, I was going to get a turn, but again, going back, we do not have a lock traffic there, and it has not been an issue, but if you would open it up, could be a cut through, then that makes right another.
Mr. Arbroe, but I also, let the gentleman, show us where the smart star building is.
Okay. In the grand...
Right.
And to edge our heartbeat, this is our smart star, we take...
Right. Well, I'm just, for the board, for the board members, when, when our students are walking, and this is several times a day, whether they're going to music, or art, or lunch, show where they're going to be walking, because it's going to be right there where we're giving this right-of-way.
I think we have a separate walkway for that.
But it's very close. If, if we give this right-of-way up...
Actually, we have half, as good as a...
That, that is true, but it is very close to this, and if we, I mean, I'm kind of, like Mr. Hall, I mean, I'm kind of worried that if we give this up, that we're opening ourselves up for traffic that we don't have right now, because the only traffic we have are just those three or four houses that are up there.
And, and that's a good question, I'll ask that, what plans do they have?
Mr. Arbroe, I noticed that Dogwood Lane is gray until it gets to the last house. Currently, it's not so, but they got, they're showing, asking for a right-of-way for the people for the, for it to run up on the next, they had this big, very, they planned a fast there, so they're talking about, they're showing additional flipping and improvement.
And, and I think, and again, I'm not very often, but I think the idea is to have a way for trash trucks to turn around, I know I was going to bring a bus in there, but to have it actually turn around, I think is sort of an idea here, which again, I haven't been involved in that much, but I just have our head.
My concern is, if we're using that property as stacking, and we turn that over to Town Grover, and it cuts their jurisdiction, if we have cars there parked, what are we going to do if law enforcement comes up there and tells us we can't do anything?
We're all stacking.
I was going to say, aren't we all, can you say?
We're stacking the property.
That's their property, drivers, yeah.
From, from this point up to Carolina is a permanent right-of-way to town, and we do stack in that area. We exit this way, but we are permanently stacked. And we do have, I know Marion and that Spirit Grover, we do have a relationship with those areas that we are able to, with stacking those public streets.
My concern, if we could at least move that, if we could move that road up 10 feet, 20 feet further to the north, it would certainly enhance the value of our, of our main property. Would, you know, would we get perfectly straight across there, and at least, if we could make some movement, it would be an advantage for our, for our school system in the future. And if this road was as easy, the road wouldn't get that easy, probably, especially with the sharp river current in there.
If all of it comes and beats the street, we can't, it's going to be very sad, but that's just, I'm sure if that didn't happen, I'll, I'll be more glad to go back to the best place and most welcome.
And that's what, you're warming by taping the motion this time, right?
Taping it on the next meeting, give him time to talk to the city grover.
Along the lines of what you and Ms. Falls, Mr. Glover and Mr. Blanton mentioned. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Thank you, Mr. Arbroe.
How, how much property would we give up? If you figured that, if they took that fairabout and moved over to the property line, moved it over to the property line instead of having it going through? How much are you talking about, if that would have to, just build you, you're not, 50 feet, you're not talking, make more, build a 50-foot right-of-way, a few hundred feet?
I'm thinking that's about 80 feet. I do know that there is a river, a drainage, small building right in front of us, and we basically have catch basins on the, on the right side of Dogwood, which is part of this that they plan to rework, and then that part turns out, really, a runoff area in here, so Dogwood, if you could actually pitch to the property line, anything that can be moved this way.
If it's doing.
Of course.
Better off you do.
I'm in it. I fix it without a thing, with a refund, but I block it back. It, you know, it would not hurt our property if that shit was closer to the property line. You know, with there being an existing road there, and the expense with relocating that, and that, I think that would be an easy...
Thank you. Next item of the business, consider, considers student transfer request, was a pleasure of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Scholz. Seconded and presented.
And moved and seconded to approve the student transfer request as presented by the superintendent. Any discussion? Officer, please, pathologically.
I don't want to say.
Any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Chair, well, now that completing our business session, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you next week.